How is it possible that that sort of corruption can take place in your department, but you are not able to ensure that those people actually receive the relief funds that you're entitled to give them as their government? Evertri has had five presidents, all of which come from your house as the African National Congress. We have farmers, emerging black farmers in this country. I'll give you an example. In Emelo, Katsibane district, a group of emerging black farmers were threatened with expropriation notices from your government, your department, led by a minister from your house, the African National Congress. And Limpopo, Mr. David Raquasi, who was given a lease agreement by the department to farm land, as well as in Western Cape, Mr. Ivan Lutu, the same thing. These people were given lease agreements by your department. Some of them got these leases even before 1994. But to date, even after 1994, even after the five presidents that you have given us as the African National Congress, these peoples do not have title to the land that they are farming, land that they farm productively, effectively, successfully and efficiently as black farmers. Why is it that that has not been able to be done by your government? But you still find it fit and you still see it fit for this bill to be passed, but you cannot give title to those farmers. These are people who on those lands that they farm, they employ a myriad of people, multitudes of farm workers, majority of which are black. The majority of which only are able to get any form of income or employment from working on these farms, but you still fail as a department to give title to those people. But you want to forge ahead with this expropriation bill. I want to ask you today, and this is a question...
I'm here to say that we have five presidents, all of which come from your house as the African National Congress. We have farmers, emerging black farmers in this country. I'll give you an example. In Emelo, Katsibane district, a group of emerging black farmers were threatened with expropriation notices from your government, your department, led by a minister from your house, the African National Congress. And Limpopo, Mr. David Raquasi, who was given a lease agreement by the department to farm land, as well as in Western Cape, Mr. Ivan Lutu, the same thing. These people were given lease agreements by your department. Some of them got these leases even before 1994. But to date, even after 1994, even after the five presidents that you have given us as the African National Congress, these peoples do not have title to the land that they are farming, land that they farm productively, effectively, successfully and efficiently as black farmers. Why is it that that has not been able to be done by your government? But you still find it fit and you still see it fit for this bill to be passed, but you cannot give title to those farmers. These are people who on those lands that they farm, they employ a myriad of people, multitudes of farm workers, majority of which are black. The majority of which only are able to get any form of income or employment from working on these farms, but you still fail as a department to give title to those people. But you want to forge ahead with this expropriation bill. I want to ask you today, and this is a question...
Greetings to everybody who is here and greetings to all those who say they want their land back. Now, it is strange to me that what you are saying is that a thief who has stolen land must be paid money for him to return that land. If somebody steals your car, that person is a criminal. You should not be paying that person anything to get your car back. The same goes for the land issue. These people have dug up the graves of our forefathers or ancestors and without any consequence. We do not have bridges, we don't have good roads in the areas in which we live. And yet you come here to tell us that you are going to give back our land. I submit to you that you are here just so you can delight in seeing us suffering here. Because all these people who are here means that they are not at work. They came here because they are not jobs, they are not gainfully employed. And you are here to rejoice in that.
I'm here to say that we have five presidents, all of which come from your house as the African National Congress. We have farmers, emerging black farmers in this country. I'll give you an example. In Emelo, Katsibane district, a group of emerging black farmers were threatened with expropriation notices from your government, your department, led by a minister from your house, the African National Congress. And Limpopo, Mr. David Raquasi, who was given a lease agreement by the department to farm land, as well as in Western Cape, Mr. Ivan Lutu, the same thing. These people were given lease agreements by your department. Some of them got these leases even before 1994. But to date, even after 1994, even after the five presidents that you have given us as the African National Congress, these peoples do not have title to the land that they are farming, land that they farm productively, effectively, successfully and efficiently as black farmers. Why is it that that has not been able to be done by your government? But you still find it fit and you still see it fit for this bill to be passed, but you cannot give title to those farmers. These are people who on those lands that they farm, they employ a myriad of people, multitudes of farm workers, majority of which are black. The majority of which only are able to get any form of income or employment from working on these farms, but you still fail as a department to give title to those people. But you want to forge ahead with this expropriation bill. I want to ask you today, and this is a question...
I'm here to say that we have five presidents, all of which come from your house as the African National Congress. We have farmers, emerging black farmers in this country. I'll give you an example. In Emelo, Katsibane district, a group of emerging black farmers were threatened with expropriation notices from your government, your department, led by a minister from your house, the African National Congress. And Limpopo, Mr. David Raquasi, who was given a lease agreement by the department to farm land, as well as in Western Cape, Mr. Ivan Lutu, the same thing. These people were given lease agreements by your department. Some of them got these leases even before 1994. But to date, even after 1994, even after the five presidents that you have given us as the African National Congress, these peoples do not have title to the land that they are farming, land that they farm productively, effectively, successfully and efficiently as black farmers. Why is it that that has not been able to be done by your government? But you still find it fit and you still see it fit for this bill to be passed, but you cannot give title to those farmers. These are people who on those lands that they farm, they employ a myriad of people, multitudes of farm workers, majority of which are black. The majority of which only are able to get any form of income or employment from working on these farms, but you still fail as a department to give title to those people. But you want to forge ahead with this expropriation bill. I want to ask you today, and this is a question...
My name is Robert Sambu. First of all, I would like to apologize for speaking in my mother tongue because some of you might be offended. However, I'm going to speak in my mother tongue because I... That is the language I was raised in. I would like to plead to you or to all of us that you must... We would like to give you a message to take back with you to parliament and to tell parliament that the time is overdue for the people to get their land back. Black people need the land for farming. They need the land for... Because there is no land anymore, anywhere. We have even run out of land on which we bury our dead. Therefore, the land issue is a pressing one and it needs to be speeded up. The farming community, especially black farming community, needs land in order to subsist on it, in order to work it and to live off it. We need to teach our children how to farm so that they can work their land because they are not jobs. Our children do not have jobs, a lot of people do not have jobs. But if they had land, at least they would work the land. We don't want you to lie to us. I am old enough to know what's going on. I have been around the corner, around the block many times. As black people, we need to get back our land. We have not come here to point fingers at each other. So let's not point fingers at each other. We just want you to go back and tell the people, the powers that be, that it is time that we got our land back.
So, I'm here to say that we have five presidents, all of which come from your house as the African National Congress. We have farmers, emerging black farmers in this country. I'll give you an example. In Emelo, Katsibane district, a group of emerging black farmers were threatened with expropriation notices from your government, your department, led by a minister from your house, the African National Congress. And Limpopo, Mr. David Raquasi, who was given a lease agreement by the department to farm land, as well as in Western Cape, Mr. Ivan Lutu, the same thing. These people were given lease agreements by your department. Some of them got these leases even before 1994. But to date, even after 1994, even after the five presidents that you have given us as the African National Congress, these peoples do not have title to the land that they are farming, land that they farm productively, effectively, successfully and efficiently as black farmers. Why is it that that has not been able to be done by your government? But you still find it fit and you still see it fit for this bill to be passed, but you cannot give title to those farmers. These are people who on those lands that they farm, they employ a myriad of people, multitudes of farm workers, majority of which are black. The majority of which only are able to get any form of income or employment from working on these farms, but you still fail as a department to give title to those people. But you want to forge ahead with this expropriation bill. I want to ask you today, and this is a question...
I'm here to say that we have five presidents, all of which come from your house as the African National Congress. We have farmers, emerging black farmers in this country. I'll give you an example. In Emelo, Katsibane district, a group of emerging black farmers were threatened with expropriation notices from your government, your department, led by a minister from your house, the African National Congress. And Limpopo, Mr. David Raquasi, who was given a lease agreement by the department to farm land, as well as in Western Cape, Mr. Ivan Lutu, the same thing. These people were given lease agreements by your department. Some of them got these leases even before 1994. But to date, even after 1994, even after the five presidents that you have given us as the African National Congress, these peoples do not have title to the land that they are farming, land that they farm productively, effectively, successfully and efficiently as black farmers. Why is it that that has not been able to be done by your government? But you still find it fit and you still see it fit for this bill to be passed, but you cannot give title to those farmers. These are people who on those lands that they farm, they employ a myriad of people, multitudes of farm workers, majority of which are black. The majority of which only are able to get any form of income or employment from working on these farms, but you still fail as a department to give title to those people. But you want to forge ahead with this expropriation bill. I want to ask you today, and this is a question...
I'm here to say that we have five presidents, all of which come from your house as the African National Congress. We have farmers, emerging black farmers in this country. I'll give you an example. In Emelo, Katsibane district, a group of emerging black farmers were threatened with expropriation notices from your government, your department, led by a minister from your house, the African National Congress. And Limpopo, Mr. David Raquasi, who was given a lease agreement by the department to farm land, as well as in Western Cape, Mr. Ivan Lutu, the same thing. These people were given lease agreements by your department. Some of them got these leases even before 1994. But to date, even after 1994, even after the five presidents that you have given us as the African National Congress, these peoples do not have title to the land that they are farming, land that they farm productively, effectively, successfully and efficiently as black farmers. Why is it that that has not been able to be done by your government? But you still find it fit and you still see it fit for this bill to be passed, but you cannot give title to those farmers. These are people who on those lands that they farm, they employ a myriad of people, multitudes of farm workers, majority of which are black. The majority of which only are able to get any form of income or employment from working on these farms, but you still fail as a department to give title to those people. But you want to forge ahead with this expropriation bill. I want to ask you today, and this is a question...
My name is Azwel Mbuyane. I am from Wad Eight in Bumbela. People here have spoken about certain books, important books, that are used in South Africa. However, there is another book that we need to read and that is the Bible. When white people, when Jean Van Ribek arrived in the Cape in 1652 and they settled, they decided to settle there, that land, they found that land there. There were people who lived on that land. Therefore, even the Bible, as I've said earlier, confirms this, that the land belongs to the people who live on that land. No South African or black person has ever gone to America to demand their land there. And no South African can go to Zimbabwe to demand their land there because they were not born there. This is their home, so this is their land. I do not understand how white people have read the Bible because if they have read it correctly, they would... That the land that now they say belongs to them does in fact belong to the people, to the indigenous people. Therefore, I would like to ask you as our leaders to go back and tell the powers that be that the people of this country want their land back. The Constitution says so, the Freedom Charter says so, and the Bible also says so. Give us our land back.
I'm here to say that we have five presidents, all of which come from your house as the African National Congress. We have farmers, emerging black farmers in this country. I'll give you an example. In Emelo, Katsibane district, a group of emerging black farmers were threatened with expropriation notices from your government, your department, led by a minister from your house, the African National Congress. And Limpopo, Mr. David Raquasi, who was given a lease agreement by the department to farm land, as well as in Western Cape, Mr. Ivan Lutu, the same thing. These people were given lease agreements by your department. Some of them got these leases even before 1994. But to date, even after 1994, even after the five presidents that you have given us as the African National Congress, these peoples do not have title to the land that they are farming, land that they farm productively, effectively, successfully and efficiently as black farmers. Why is it that that has not been able to be done by your government? But you still find it fit and you still see it fit for this bill to be passed, but you cannot give title to those farmers. These are people who on those lands that they farm, they employ a myriad of people, multitudes of farm workers, majority of which are black. The majority of which only are able to get any form of income or employment from working on these farms, but you still fail as a department to give title to those people. But you want to forge ahead with this expropriation bill. I want to ask you today, and this is a question...
My name is Azwel Mbuyane. I am from Wad Eight in Bumbela. People who here have spoken about certain books, important books, that are used in South Africa. However, there is another book that we need to read and that is the Bible. When white people, when Jean Van Ribek arrived in the Cape in 1652 and they settled, they decided to settle there, that land, they found that land there. There were people who lived on that land. Therefore, even the Bible, as I've said earlier, confirms this, that the land belongs to the people who live on that land. No South African or black person has ever gone to America to demand their land there. And no South African can go to Zimbabwe to demand their land there because they were not born there. This is their home, so this is their land. I do not understand how white people have read the Bible because if they have read it correctly, they would... That the land that now they say belongs to them does in fact belong to the people, to the indigenous people. Therefore, I would like to ask you as our leaders to go back and tell the powers that be that the people of this country want their land back. The Constitution says so, the Freedom Charter says so, and the Bible also says so. Give us our land back. My name is Azwel Mbuyane. I am from Wad Eight in Bumbela. People who here have spoken about certain books, important books, that are used in South Africa. However, there is another book that we need to read and that is the Bible. When white people, when Jean Van Ribek arrived in the Cape in 1652 and they settled, they decided to settle there, that land, they found that land there. There were people who lived on that land. Therefore, even the Bible, as I've said earlier, confirms this, that the land belongs to the people who live on that land. No South African or black person has ever gone to America to demand their land there. And no South African can go to Zimbabwe to demand their land there because they were not born there. This is their home, so this is their land. I do not understand how white people have read the Bible because if they have read it correctly, they would... That the land that now they say belongs to them does in fact belong to the people, to the indigenous people. Therefore, I would like to ask you as our leaders to go back and tell the powers that be that the people of this country want their land back. The Constitution says so, the Freedom Charter says so, and the Bible also says so. Give us our land back.
I'm here to say that we have five presidents, all of which come from your house as the African National Congress. We have farmers, emerging black farmers in this country. I'll give you an example. In Emelo, Katsibane district, a group of emerging black farmers were threatened with expropriation notices from your government, your department, led by a minister from your house, the African National Congress. And Limpopo, Mr. David Raquasi, who was given a lease agreement by the department to farm land, as well as in Western Cape, Mr. Ivan Lutu, the same thing. These people were given lease agreements by your department. Some of them got these leases even before 1994. But to date, even after 1994, even after the five presidents that you have given us as the African National Congress, these peoples do not have title to the land that they are farming, land that they farm productively, effectively, successfully and efficiently as black farmers. Why is it that that has not been able to be done by your government? But you still find it fit and you still see it fit for this bill to be passed, but you cannot give title to those farmers. These are people who on those lands that they farm, they employ a myriad of people, multitudes of farm workers, majority of which are black. The majority of which only are able to get any form of income or employment from working on these farms, but you still fail as a department to give title to those people. But you want to forge ahead with this expropriation bill. I want to ask you today, and this is a question...
I'm here to say that we have five presidents, all of which come from your house as the African National Congress. We have farmers, emerging black farmers in this country. I'll give you an example. In Emelo, Katsibane district, a group of emerging black farmers were threatened with expropriation notices from your government, your department, led by a minister from your house, the African National Congress. And Limpopo, Mr. David Raquasi, who was given a lease agreement by the department to farm land, as well as in Western Cape, Mr. Ivan Lutu, the same thing. These people were given lease agreements by your department. Some of them got these leases even before 1994. But to date, even after 1994, even after the five presidents that you have given us as the African National Congress, these peoples do not have title to the land that they are farming, land that they farm productively, effectively, successfully and efficiently as black farmers. Why is it that that has not been able to be done by your government? But you still find it fit and you still see it fit for this bill to be passed, but you cannot give title to those farmers. These are people who on those lands that they farm, they employ a myriad of people, multitudes of farm workers, majority of which are black. The majority of which only are able to get any form of income or employment from working on these farms, but you still fail as a department to give title to those people. But you want to forge ahead with this expropriation bill. I want to ask you today, and this is a question... I'm here to say that we have five presidents, all of which come from your house as the African National Congress. We have farmers, emerging black farmers in this country. I'll give you an example. In Emelo, Katsibane district, a group of emerging black farmers were threatened with expropriation notices from your government, your department, led by a minister from your house, the African National Congress. We will not solve the challenges of the land. We... The money that is available to pay for the land must be given to black people for small-scale farmers. I mean, these meetings, we should be starting saving for the development of the small-scale farmers instead of coming here and wasting money. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, to build houses, build businesses. And the expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of these things. We have indicated that we want the Constitution to be changed so that the land is expropriated without compensation. And we find this as a necessary distraction. Thank you very much.
Greetings to the committee members. My name is Numpumela Lumoyane. I'm a public representative of the Democratic Alliance. I reside in Baberton, Ward Forty-four. Chair, the expropriation bill has been a source of contention since its inception and has remained so through the many reviews and amendments. The proposed amendment will allow expropriation of land without compensation where the compensation can be nil. Also, the amendment proposes that legislation be used to determine the circumstances under which compensation can be nil. I found these grounds problematic and concerning. Although the amendment refers to land, it must be understood, Chair, that by land, it is not confined to agricultural land. It includes any land ranging from farm to communal land, smallholding to urban properties. I will support a land reform that makes South Africans owners and participants in growing a thriving economy and not the state as the sole custodian of the land. Because that's how you empower people and give them a foot in the door of the economy. That's how you build an inclusive, prosperous South Africa. A successful land reform does not require amending the Constitution or amending the expropriation bill. It requires government action and eradication of corruption. Thank you.